Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Rossi, Chairman of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order. As part of that, I am going to note that I am going to pass the gavel to Beau Clark tonight since I'm remote. I apologize for that, but it makes me a regular member for tonight rather than the chair, and Beau will be chairing the meeting. So Beau, you can call for the seating of members.
Yeah, I'd ask for a roll call, please, I mean a roll call.
Michael Florio is unable to attend this evening. Michael Rossi.
Here.
Ellen Dalgrin.
Here.
Dylan Walter.
Here.
Jay Mandell.
Here.
Zach Lord.
Here.
Eddie Alvarino.
Here.
Cinzia Latieri.
Here.
Beau Clark.
Here.
Robert Corson.
Here.
Brian Pellegrini.
Here.
Susan Marcus.
Here.
At this point, I'd like to seat Susan Marcus for Michael Florio. The next item on our agenda is the Chair's comments. As acting Chair, I do not have any comments for tonight's meeting. So move on to number three, which is the minutes from the August 11th, 2025, rate of a meeting. Does anybody have any comments or corrections from those minutes?
So I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
And seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you can. We move on to item number four on our agenda, which is our public hearing portion. At this point, I'd like to ask our secretary, Ellen, to read the legal notice, please.
Count of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. Count of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 8th, 2025, at 7:00 PM to consider the following. PZC-25-16 text amendment addition to Section 12 and amend Section 727, Susan. Of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Regulations Were Allowed Residential Adaptive Reuse to Existing Structures For the Purpose of Multiple Dwelling Units in the B2, B3, and B4 Zones. The applicant Matthew Williams, Williams Architects. PZC-27-17, Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission Text Amendment to Section 18 With Clinton zoning regulations to remove single-family home exemptions for coastal site plan reviews Pursued to Public Act 25-33. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. The applications and correspondence are available for public spending on the town's website. Anyone requiring special accommodation in the case space in the public hearing should contact the Land Use Office At H600-669-6133. Michael Rossi, Chairman, Count of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. The first of our public hearings is PZC-25-16, which is the text amendments. Would the applicant like to come forward, please?
Good evening, I'm Matt Williams, Williams Architects, 897 Boston Post Road. I'm also a Clinton resident. I would suspect that you folks have had a chance to take a look at this, but I'll just recap quickly. I was here about two months ago for a discussion of how we might be able to allow certain instances More than one residential unit in our business zones. And I thought that a lot of the comments that you folks made were spot on in terms of maintaining The integrity of our downtown business district, which is obviously extremely important. But also maybe open this door to encouraging Some of our older buildings, many of which are not the greatest shit To be done, to be renovated in a way that where they may not really be practical for a business perspective. So one thing I became aware of was that there was this residential adaptive reuse regulation in Chester. And I took a look at that, and I thought it was very interesting because what they did there was They are allowing in their commercial districts for people to renovate existing buildings And turn them into multi-family use or other uses within those zones. Their regulation is very different. They don't fully prohibit multifamily in their commercial district. However, in that in Clinton, here obviously we do. And it was a good starting point where I started talking to Abby about it. So I drafted it out, which was really, didn't really take much of anything from theirs, to be honest with you. But the principle of allowing people to take, you know, an older structure. And in this case, this, you know, amendment yet in front of you requires that it have to be 50 years old. And it's not eligible unless it was originally intended for or converted to residential use. So you can think of a number of older houses we have up in down Route 1 That either, and many that we've lost, either become torn down Or they sit in a state of, you know, really underutilized Or they're either not, or not properly productive from a commercial perspective, otherwise it would be used that way. So what the regulation does, and I'll just go through the basic post-regulation, the basic bullets of this. So it adds the nuts and bolts of the proposal is that there's a new Definition added to your definitions, and it is residential adaptive reuse project. And it's defined as a change of use to an existing structure for the purpose of multiple dwelling units. In Chapter 12, you added a section to your special exception criteria, so that there is now a special exception criteria for this use. I know, I think it's, one of your multifamily definitions lacks that aspect, actually, and I think this will help fill that hole. So in Section 12.641, as proposed, it says, "So encourage rehabilitation and utilization of existing buildings originally designed For or converted residential use and promote the preservation of existing buildings that contribute to the historic character of town." Then there's a section 12.64.2, which is eligibility, and as I just stated, You know, only existing structures that were originally residential are eligible. It must be documented by the applicant, and you know, to be able to show that that is the case, that they are or were originally residential use. And you, as a commission, has to make a finding that confirms that. So there's a 50-year-old minimum age, you know, so any structure has to be at least that old. And what I think is most critical is, and this is to what you, everyone is concerned about previously, is that There's a section C under 12.64.2 that gives you the ability to take into account The optimal mix of existing commercial use. So what it says is, "Commission shall have the authority to consider the following and granting Or denying a special exception permit for dwelling units other than single-family detached dwelling units." And there's two criteria that you can exercise. One is the extent to which the proposal will help develop an optimal mix of residential units within the zoning district While maintaining Clinton Center as primarily a commercial area. The second one is the extent to which the proposal preserves active street level uses. I, that actually is pretty much straight out of a piece of the regulation in Madison that I've seen work very effectively there. Where they've had older residential structures that might have been quaint and cute as a shop at one time, but they're no longer Large enough for it to be economically viable, where they had to partner in those kinds of situations. And they've allowed this to happen there where it can be converted to residential. You've got to be able to show that it does not, but what they're very careful about is not subtracting from the current base. So you have that way in here based on those two, those two pieces of the criteria plus two criteria. And then there's a housekeeping thing here that Abby added about The flood zone having to do with that, which I think if it's in a flood hazard area, she can probably speak better to that than I can. And there are some other fundamental standards that I think you'll find, you know, would make you much more comfortable with this. So, "Since the building proposed for reuse must be capable of being redeveloped for residential use." That's what, again, we're talking about existing buildings. "Expansion and external changes to the building are to remain within the existing building footprint Or be limited to those needed for life, safety, and accountability purposes." So this doesn't open the door to somebody taking existing residential structure and expanding, You know, just because they have the area, even if they can do it within the, you know, the dimensional Except for life, safety, and accessibility, but they could go up. According to this, yes, it's a footprint limitation.
Exactly.
Building up on older structures, what we only have, we only have 35 feet of mill anyway, generally not. It's not something that usually would be fruitful. But the other thing is that as long as it stays in the existing footprint, the existing setbacks are to be accepted as it can form. So again, if you have a building that's threatened against a property line, a setback line, an owner is let that sit because the invariances are going to do anything to it. And if it's large enough to have two apartments in it or two, whatever they want to make out of residential units, They could exercise this regulation, and then you can see this building just better for us. And I think there are a lot of things in town I know I can think of that fit that category. And then there's a note here that Abby added about parking it being behind the building as a preference. And then this is proposed to be allowed in the B2, B3, B4 zone. When I first looked at this, I wasn't sure that that was necessarily necessary, but I actually think it would be beneficial. You know, as I got into this, I really thought that it would really help a lot, you know, outside of, As you know, I was hired by the owners of 14 West Main Street, take a look at their property. And I told them, "The only way you're going to get more than, you know, one residential unit in there is with, you know, a 830G affordable housing application." You may recall a few years ago, I shared with another client, we did, we did two of those actually, 2634 West Main Street. Those projects right now haven't moved forward, but if they don't, someone else could maybe come back to those old buildings And repurpose them for video units or whatever they might be able to utilize, you know. So I think that, to me, is what I would find, you know, as a longtime resident here, Really a positive thing for the downtown area because it just allows people to be able to take the building, make it more viable, you know. You know, one of the old Sarvas I remember sat on the market forever, I don't know if you remember that. It was where, I forgot the gentleman's name on that building down here, but he, one time he had a tiny little coffee thing in the corner and he, Which maybe something he had just because it was the only way he could do anything there, but he used it sort of as an art gallery or residence. It was over 4,000 square feet, but it could never really be anything more than one residential unit. And that sat on the market for years, you know. I just, I've seen a lot of exam buildings, and I think it's good, it could benefit, I think, to the town, so. I don't know if, is there anything else you think that I left out, Abby? I know you wrote a good executive summary. I didn't know if you wanted to, if that gets read in or?
Yeah, it's part of the, it's part of the record documents, and so it's in there. If there, if I can go through the staff report with the commission, if you'd like now, or?
What do you think is more beneficial?
Yeah, I can, I mean, I can give a quick summary, quick summary now, throwing stuff, covered most of this. The only other pieces that I had added in were Section 29, just clarification on the language of non-conformities. So there's a modification, you'll see essentially adding some language to the end of 29.2.1 So that there's not a scenario in which folks would be precluded in one section from doing this, but allowed in another. So that's, that's really it. And then Section 3 obviously has the definition, Section 27, just making sure the use table is updated if it's were to be added to it. So basically Sections 3, 12, 27, and 29. I also included in your staff reports, just the zoning maps for the Section 16, where the districts apply. Some of the language around the flood plain has to do with recent comments we've received from deep in their coastal review The, and sort of looking at dry egress and some of the resiliency pieces we've been working on. Especially as you start to go eastward in the B4 district, there are maybe some challenging properties on that end of town. Otherwise, you know, we're really, much of this, much of the eligible property would be sort of in the core of downtown, headed down Commerce a little bit. And kind of headed out, heading for growth. That's the basis.
I have a couple of questions to do more of housekeeping. First of all, a published agenda doesn't have any mention of the addition to 3.19.
Yep.
Additionally, the legal notice doesn't propose, doesn't have include the sections or proposed changes to 319 or 2921. Is that an issue?
It's, we, the commission could amend the proposal to include these things. The question for the commission, well, not question, but the commission could also renotice And continue the public hearing with any notice for those sections, if you're concerned about the legality of late complete laws.
I would be very concerned about that.
Yeah.
Now, the notice is very important that this be, you know, people have the opportunity to address these issues.
Yeah, I think what happened in this case was that the deadline for the paper was before some of these additions to the notice came about, so.
My next observation, if you will, and I brought this up when you first came before us, is To me, this seems to be a clear violation of the uniformity clause of Section 8-2, the Connecticut general statutes. It says right in it that uses within his own have to be consistent. So how can we say that if you have an older home, you can have this use, but nobody else can have this use? You could have a house or a building that is right next door to one that is 49 years old, and it would not be applicable. To me, this is just an outright violation of the uniformity clause. I mean, that's our charge in 8-2 to follow that. I don't know.
I could tell you that, I reached out to Abby the day after, and she put her question out to your, to your town council, and I don't believe got a response. I don't, you know, I don't have the answer to that. Or whether, whether or not that is an issue, and if you'd want to, you know, if you'd like to get
I believe, I believe it's a very, certainly we would understand that, but I think, I think what I just, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a deeper question. I don't know why. I'm not, I really don't know why that would be a problem.
So I just to give an update, so I did, I did have a conversation with the town attorney, the, He didn't believe that there was a particular violation of the uniformity clause Provided that the standards were clear and it was a predictable sort of way of managing these particularly properties, that use was being added to the district. And that
But uses, the uses restricted, just if.
I, I, I understand, I mean, for the, for the benefit of the commission, I'd like to read the section of 8-2.
And it gives us, the beginning of 8-2 gives us our, what our rights are and what we have to do and everything. But this pertinent sentence is, "All such regulations shall be uniform for each class of or kind of buildings, Structures or use throughout each district." Clearly, this is not. It's giving an exception for houses that are of a certain age. It's giving an exception of uses that is not allowed in this zone. I don't see how we, I don't see how we circumvent that. I mean, somebody could give the opinion that it's not red, but I think we all know, and we're looking at red.
I think that, I could, what I can just offer you is the precedent in Chester. Because it's the same, it's the same principle.
I understand that, but I think, in my opinion, if Chester made an error, we're not bound to live by that error.
I understand. Yes, thank you.
Mike Rossi has his hand up.
Yes, Michael.
Okay, I had a couple of things. First of all, You keep talking, or in this, we talk about the town center. It really should say in the B2, B3, B4 district, because not all of these are in the town center. The other thing goes back to Beau's point. I disagree with Beau. I think that this, we are making these uses available in the district, so it isn't a conflict. It's by special exception. Properties can age into it, that's fine. If the, but I would like us to consider getting something in writing from council Before we would close, close the public hearing on this, to make sure that, you know, it's not just Beau's opinion and my opinion. I think we should actually have a good written response. That's all I had to say.
I absolutely agree. Ellen?
Yeah, my comment is not on such a theoretical level. You had commented that you wanted to allow only those items, you know, outside the footprint That were necessary for life and safety or something like that.
Accessible.
Accessibility and life and safety, but there are other things that also end up around An old structure that you're running in, thinking of an air conditioning compressor Or a standby generator or something of that nature. If you had, if you were planning to put those things in, should those be added The list of things that you would propose as being possible outside the original footprint?
Yeah, I think it would come down to the administrator's interpretation and ultimately yours of the term footprint. You have a lot of, you have a lot of definitions in your regulation that could either be covered or not, or early discovered or not. And I didn't attempt to navigate that.
No, and I think the piece there would be, if it's this structural footprint, so the outside walls of the existing building Would be the point where we measure those things, so typically those would be on pads separate from that structure So they would still be evaluated for other compliance purposes, but not in the footprint.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
I saw some other hands up. Cinzia?
Yeah, so I think my concern really right now is around the B2 for downtown commercial. Just, you know, having worked on the POCD and understanding, I think where we want downtown to go Or in just hearing from the public where they think they want downtown to go Is to bring more business, more economic development. I feel like with, we have Pearson coming in, we have a lot of new buildings, condos Being built right by the PlayStation. I feel like, you know, yes, there is such, you know, a good point in revitalizing older invading buildings. But there's also that long-term risk of losing, you know, this ground floor conversion To something that I think this town is trending toward and wants to see. And so that's kind of where, where I'm feeling that when we relinquish those business districts to residential, We really do put at risk what economic development we do have, especially for our downtown. So that's kind of where I'm at.
This proposal though has written to it your discretion.
It does have the discretion on that, but that's a kind of a tricky situation, as we well know, with special exceptions. That's arguable, and it's, it's not, it's not cut and dry. And I agree with Cinzia's assessment that if you look at the current POCD, there's several references to Mixed-use development and so on along the Post Road. And, you know, we're privileged to have an insight into the coming POCD, and that same theme has been carried forward. And quite frankly, if we're going to abandon those principles that we've established over the past 10 years, and hopefully in the next 10 years, I'd rather see an 830G. If it's going to be strictly residential, Not that, you know, I still want to preserve the, preserve the commercial point, but But if it's going to, if we're going to sacrifice the commercial land, Might as well add to the, we might as well add to the convertible.
I don't see how this proposal abandons that principle.
Pardon me?
I don't see how this proposal abandons that principle.
Because you're not proposing to have mixed use, which is, which is the goal, to have mixed use. Yeah.
So we've been dragging for downtown.
Dylan, isn't this kind of just like a bandaid on something for the time being? I thought we were going to be going over all these zoning regs for downtown once we completely leave with the POCD, which is right around the corner.
We are, but that doesn't, that doesn't, not, that doesn't disqualify from me coming with a recommendation for a change of amendment.
You're the public hearing.
Yes, yeah. We'll get to you in just a minute. As soon as the commission is done, we'll ask for public input.
What is the question, Abby? Does it put us in a, with the discretion and special exemption, Does it put the commissioners in a sticky situation if we approve some and not others? Does that where, because I'm thinking if somebody
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
The quality of your findings are, would be the key. It would have to be very specific findings and reasons for which you would approve or deny each individual application. They would be taken on a case-by-case basis. A special exception is not a promise to have something happen in our zone district.
Exactly.
But, but we would take it individually. Okay.
But with any special exception, we have to remember that just because it's a special exception Doesn't give us the right to say no or yes.
No, it does not.
We have to have specific reasons for denying an application and disqualifying special exception.
If the arbitrary.
Any other questions for the commission at this point?
No, but, what you went before, to change the verbiage. We were talking about the verbiage that you wrote up, it's not in there, we go forward, that's for you, you know.
Read the notices.
The notices.
Yes, I, but we have time to correct that.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, I think, I think the special exception principle is that you've got to comply with the criteria in the regulation. Exactly, correct. And that, that's not a piece of criteria. That's open discretion you have as a commission. I don't think it's the same as if we didn't, you know, meet if the building was 45 years old. You know, as long as you comply with the criteria, you have, you know, fairly firm legal defense Against the commission denying. But in that instance, I personally don't see it that way. I don't see it as that risky, and I've seen it in action.
But see, there's, there again is my question of uniformity. As you just mentioned, if a 45-year-old building came in, they would be denied. They'd have to wait five years until it was applicable to them.
Yeah.
That's, that's an issue with uniformity. To me, I, you know, I don't see how we get around that, but.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll certainly have the town attorney provide a written, you know, a written opinion for you. I think that, you know, as part of the conversation was because the use is being separately defined And the criteria for the use is clear in the special exception, that that use is only enabled in these particular districts subject to Section 12.
I understand that portion, but I still have, I have issues with both the use being restricted and the buildings being restricted. I think they both, you know, even if you mesh them, I think you still have a uniform issue. At this point, we'd like to take some questions from the public. You have to come forward, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Mercy Sorta, mine Partridge.
Could you, could you come up a little bit closer?
Will you hear you?
That's all right. Hi, I'm Mercy Sorta, and I'm at Nine Partridge. And I think it's really important that we take this into consideration for a multitude of reasons. And the thing that you keep bringing up right now, which is uniformity, but if it's 50 years, it's 50 years. That makes it uniform for all that want to do this. They do have to, if it's 45 years, wait for the other five. I feel that we have great historic buildings that are old in this town that are not being utilized. And I know it's a fact for having two adult children that want to live in this town and can't find a place to live. There are not enough apartments, there are not enough places to live. And we need that. And the idea that one works in New York City and wants to be right by a train station and wants to be downtown where they can walk. I have an elderly relative that would love to live here and be closer and to be downtown And be able to get to the train to go to New York to specialist, would love to be able to walk down to, you know, Grand Pizza. I think that we have to look at the buildings that we have that have been sitting there for years and years and years That commercial people are not building on them. So if we have people that want to make them residential and want to bring our children back to the town, We've got to be able to give them housing. And right now, the average price housing in Connecticut, Matt in Clinton, Connecticut, do you know how much it is?
Yeah.
It is, so if we don't provide more rentals and these rental properties that we've allowed to come in, which is, I think, great, But at $3,000 for a one-bedroom on John Street is not affordable for our children that have gone to college now, graduated, and are starting a career.
Thank you.
So I just feel that saying that it's not going to be uniform, or we give a rule like 50 years that you can do it, We're taking advantage of our old buildings that are beautiful, that we want to maintain and not, you know, throw away. Like the one in front of Clinton Citizens Bank, I used to be the manager over there, and they tore down that building. Well, maybe if we allowed that to be condos or apartments or whatever, maybe long ago, they would have built that out. Now they took it down, and now they're building a whole bunch of stuff that's not going to be affordable. So I'd like you to consider 50 years is 50 years. That is something that can be written with rules and regulations. We'll have stuff downtown where our children and other families can come and be. So I just would like you to really consider it and not just be, it can't work.
I'd like to point out that as Cinzia and I kind of discussed, The owners of these properties have the ability to come in and really override all of our regulations By doing both an 830G affordable housing application. This proposal is not proposing to have these apartments at affordable rates. And don't kid yourself to think that the landlords are going to say, oh, you know, they were nice enough to let us in. We'll give them a break on the price. It's not going to happen.
We want them to be able to have an apartment here, regardless. There's no place for them to move to. There's no available apartments. If you look right now, there's basically one There's basically one on top of Glenwood because I look every week for my daughter.
One on the post road I saw that that uh.
But but my point is that, right? One or two? That's not enough. And we have empty housing that can be filled by our families.
But as as I pointed out and as as we discussed. Profitability and availability are kind of two different things.
I'm not saying it has to be affordable. I'm saying there has to be a place where they can live. It would be nice if it was affordable too. But we just need more places where it's not buying a house because buying a house is not affordable for a single person or someone just starting.
All right, we agree and we. We touched on that to a great extent with the plan of conservation and development that's upcoming. Uh, you know, we're going to look into different. Options for housing, not just apartments or, you know, the large single-family homes. There's a lot of things we want to look at and we've focused on that with the upcoming P O C D. So we understand your concern and we're doing our action to try to address that.
We do want it downtown. That's important too.
Absolutely.
The historical buildings would be so beautiful for our town. So I think that being downtown is also very important for the elderly, for the youth that want to jump on a train. Go to Stanford.
I would also like to point out that would be proposed amendments. They don't have to preserve the beautiful old hubs. They just have to stay within the footprint.
Yeah.
There's a big difference.
Yeah, I want it all. I want, I want, I want apartments available to our families.
But you understand what I'm saying?
So I want it back.
No, the the preservation, the preservation of the of the existing beautiful buildings, and I share your assessment that that we have some very attractive older buildings.
Yeah.
But this proposal does not restrict them from altering them.
Right.
So you have to kind of.
I just don't want them falling down around us. I'd rather have them.
Understand.
Have living people in them. Thank you so much.
Certainly, thank you. Please come forward, sir, and state your name for the record.
My name is John Sany. I'm in Clinton for more than four years. I do accept the knowledge. Thank you so much, you know. As a small business owner, we like to have more businesses. The question is how? It's very tough right now. The economy is very, very bad. It's all stuff leaving to the sky right now. Affordable, you know, it's very, very expensive. I hear. Clinton going to be residential, the downtown is very good. I think I think it's a good idea, but it's hard to be, you know, uh. And to be like a, like a fair rent, you know. We need that actually more apartment in the town, honestly. And the one, the best we have, we have the town that tried to to keep it open. It's hard to bring new businesses to the park. Very, very tough, right? And I'm so glad that that I'm, I agree with her. We do need that that place to be. Nice, like a fort, not a fort, but like a nice apartment, very fair then. For the public that you're more than.
Thank you. Is there anybody? Please go forward, sir.
Sarah, I'm twenty-eight, I am Clinton's partridge. Um, I am awful preserving some historic houses. I think it's important for our town. Look how beautiful downtown Madison is. They have historical houses all through their downtown. Um, I think it's a wonderful idea. Maybe make them affordable. I don't know, whatever. I just, I just think we need to preserve some of the history in the town. It's not being done.
This does not require them to preserve those historic houses. That's an important point.
Well, maybe you need to write it into there.
Understood. I agree with the historic homes.
Yeah. Because part of the downtown, some parts of downtown don't look so hot. Right, yes. Yeah.
Is there anybody else in the public?
Yeah, Mr. Cuoco.
Please come forward, say your name.
Someone mentioned there's all kinds of housing going on while there's a huge housing issue nationwide. In twenty sixteen, seven hundred and forty condos went by Citrix Bank as a saw. Uh, I insured that home forever. That old couple that there, there wasn't a business in there. Kidge was on the first floor. He had that little antique shop that maybe it's something in front. It's been residential forever. Uh, somehow I insured that thing and I walk it by years, years and years ago. Um, and I I don't, I know nothing about zoning and and all of the the technical aspect of it, but we have other buildings in town right across the street from the old surroundings. That 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 thing that was the, that's all residential, a brand-new big white monster on the side. It's all residential out. And a couple of buildings down that used to be Clinton National Bank or Clinton Connecticut Savings Bank. It's like vacant forever. That building's all residential. It was a bank. It was all residential. So it seems that that's going on. Now I have this wonderful old building and I like, I'd like to sell my house, move into it, be able to walk to town. I'm saying I'm old, you know, be able to walk to town. My doctor's office or whatever, it's sitting right there. Yeah, and so I I, it's kind of balls in my my mind a little, right, that this can't be made or. We've made all residential. It's beautiful. They're trying to preserve it. The need is there and basically guys, been residential alongside.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to address the commission?
Neil Lyle, if you can. Uh, just just wanted to say that I agree with this amendment. Just wanted to say that this board considers it. I just moved to Clint two years ago. I had a hard time finding somewhere to live. Uh, it took me over here just to find something. Uh, so I know I have a lot of friends that are from this area and they want to move down to Clint. I think it's a great opportunity to have folks come here. Uh, we need some more housing. We just echo a lot of the residents' states. Um, also seeing properties, you know, uh, be upgraded. That's great. Um, walking, I love walking down Main Street. So seeing these properties uh get improved um would be a real great benefit for this town. So. I'll just, this board considers, so.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to address the commission? Does the commission have any further questions for the African at this time? Michael?
Yep. The one thing that, I mean, of course, I know we're going to have to continue this for a couple of reasons, but. What I was wondering about is can we, well, actually, we have time to do it. Can we change or add in the provision about preserving buildings if we're going to consider this? Because I think that that does um enter into a lot of what I've heard from the public. And also, you know, would further some of the stuff that we've uh know is coming in the P O C D. So, you know, to think about that, uh, amending it now before we um. Or having it amended before next uh meeting.
But, Michael, if I'm not mistaken, they can, you can amend it after we continue the meeting, correct? And then notice it.
Correct. So additional language, it will be renoticed. We can put additional language. It would be changing the text of section twelve that it proposed. And so during the public hearing process, yes, you can make, you can make arrangements and have those conversations, but we want to get that into the record.
So next meeting.
And I do have one other comment. Abby, um, in your uh report. You say something about uh needing to fix section four. Um, and section four is not necessary for any of this.
No, section four just references the application requirements. And so I just referenced that the application requirements had been met in terms of what needed to be submitted. Application, yeah.
Okay.
So it appears we're going to continue this. I have one other uh question that I think we should think about over the top. We don't have to, don't have to defend tonight. There's also provision in here to declare that the non-conforming uses are now conforming. So, again, I have an issue with the uniformity on allowing certain homes that have. Non-conforming setbacks and so on to declare them as conforming uses. Again, to me, this. Me, this whole thing mistakes of of being in violation of H S two, the uniformity clause that's included in the dash two. Um, I.
Well, if if they become a compliant use through this regulation, they will be not, they will go along, they will not be non-conforming users. You have an opportunity here to take a whole bunch of existing non-conforming uses and make.
But the non-conformities might be the setbacks and that sort of.
Right, that's not a conforming building. It's a different, a different issue. And I think that we tried to address that just to encourage people to repair their buildings. There's a number of things that I'd like to address if I can with the comments. So one of the things you've got to be willing to accept, and I, you see this a lot of places. You know, various, all kinds of zoning. The market does not lie. If there was a commercial entity that could make something out of that space. Or any one of these other un- underutilized buildings, it would have happened.
Sure would have.
You know, and and I've been part of an awful lot of planning in my career and a lot of planning committees. I started on the quickly revitalization committee in nineteen ninety-four year. Um, and, you know, we, it's great to idealize what might happen and we all love mixed use. You have a some, a version of mixed use in regulation now somewhat in the business. Um, or, you know, with the uh, the accessory apartment piece, okay? Which I don't think was really intentional, but it's just the way it ended up happening, you know. Um, so we all want that mixed use. Everybody, you know. But I don't, but we've got to be realistic about, is Clinton going to become blueback support? If you all are familiar with that, what started, okay? One of the most successful, well, you know, mixed-use developments ever conceived, you know. It has a, an economy and a critical mass demographically that is just completely out of our thing. What I think, I think. Is to embrace the architectural inventory that they have and just try to make them function better. And I really think that that's, that's the most important thing. The other thing you really need to know about this property or any other one. There's a tipping point very quickly when it no longer makes any sense to work on this building. So when you sit down and you try to plan and put an apartment in a building or two or whatever it might, you might be able to do. Once you begin to change it to a certain degree, you're but you have to tear the building down. Once that happens, all the expenses of new construction are, you know, it just explode, okay? And that's why we're seeing all these eight thirty G proposals. That's why we're seeing so many endangered uh historic buildings. I think of the E M V D district and the battles have gone on down there over the years. Where it might have just been easier if they could have just at least applied the, you know, multi-family thing to that somehow. And 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 you wouldn't have to use the hammer of the state's attorney general's office to threaten people. You know, and take away their property rights in instances like that, which is the only way that it's done in these types of historic districts. Because they're not really, they're not local historic districts. They are just generalized historic districts. And you've probably heard it from people who who who, you know, who uh who backed those efforts over the years and it's happened on Waterside Lane on a number of properties just recently. Um, so I really think that what you've got to realize is that you've got buildings that are not being utilized. And you've got buildings that have been for sale for year after year. I know the one with the, the uh, the pie lady, provide a better term. That building, I can remember looking at that building back in the mid nineties to potentially buy. And we didn't do it at the time. It didn't make any sense uh for us. But I look at that building as, boy, turn that into two units. That's two really nice places to live. They're not slummy. They're not rent-controlled perhaps. But I just think that it's, you know, those things could, you know, could happen. And I'm not, I don't own any of these properties because I'm not in the development business. But I think the thing that recognizes that, you very quickly get to a point where people want to tear these buildings down or the buildings disappear, just like. Next to Friendly's when the gas station burned down. That has other prop, that has other issues, but. Then it takes the big outside developer to come in and they call me and they say, how many units can I jam in here with an eight thirty G? And believe me, I can do a whole lot more, you know, than than that. But I don't think that's the right thing for this town. So I think this may be a little bit of a stopgap. I know you folks have been working hard on trying to get your regulation revamped.
Works out in about a year, right?
But but I also think that, I don't think this proposal puts you at risk of an explosion of forcing business out and. And making the whole downtown residential in any way, shape or form. I really don't. So I just like to take that into consideration. You know, I think that the, you know, the technical questions on uniformity and so on, I mean, I see. Regulations all the time and there, believe me, there are a million places where there's places people can attack. And I think if you haven't been sued on that basis yet. Personally, I wouldn't be concerned about it.
I look at those things and I, and I don't worry about getting sued or not. Um, and I, I agree with your point. I mean, the the Pie Lady House, for an example, is a store-looking house. It'd be great to see that preserved. But again. Zoning is about law. And if it is a violation of eight dash two, the uniformity clause in eight dot two, maybe we'll get a legal opinion that it's not. But it's certainly a question that has to be answered. If it's answered in the negative that it is a violation, we might be able to rewrite the the proposal in a way that it's not. Uh, but it's important to get that question answered. And then we can debate the the other issues on a, on a more level playing field.
I would agree. I think it'd be nice to have that answered so that you wouldn't have any concern. Planning, you know, that's the zoning piece. Planning is about shaping your community.
Yes, yes.
And and I just, you know, hopefully you understand that that's really the biggest reason I'm here.
And that's the reason all of us are.
I'll be honest, I know. I'll be honest, I really didn't have time to take on Lewis's project. He'll tell you how many months he chased me to look at that. But I really think it's a, it's a chance for you to see some nice things happen in discussion for us.
Like I said, there's, there's a couple of things and there's notices we have to address. So at this point, I'd like to have a motion to continue the public hearing.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor of continuing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't need to, but I think our clerk needs to get a couple of confirmations on names and addresses from the people who spoke.
That's right.
I do, if I may. John, is your name John?
It's John Husany.
Uh, your address, please. Thank you.
You had the vote by Cuoco.
Yes.
Sarah Hollinger.
I did, yes. Thank you very much.
Also, Mark?
Yes.
So we have a, we had to vote for in favor and anybody opposed, anybody abstaining. Motion to continue passes and we'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Right, Abby, do we have enough time to get the notice?
Yes, it'll be October sixth, the next regular meeting. We can get the, we'll get the notice out to that.
Thank you very much. The next item on tonight's agenda is. I'm sorry, is P Z C twenty-five dash seventeen. Abby, can you just briefly review this for us? This is the, to amend the uh.
Correct. So this is, this is essentially um a language modification to section eighteen of the planning and zoning regulations. That removes the exemption for single-family homes within the coastal areas from having to apply for a coastal site plan permit. Um, currently, up until October first, um, we have a, we have a provision in the regulations in. That exempts most single-family homes unless it was within one hundred feet of certain coastal resources from having to apply for a coastal site plan. As of October first, the state's level act twenty-five thirty-three removed that exemption. So this is essentially to be consistent with their. Um, with with that regulation.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission at this point? Okay, uh, we'll be prepared to close the public hearing. Yeah, is there anybody from the public who has to address uh P Z C twenty-five dash seventeen? There being none? Any other questions for the commissioners?
Did you guys all hear?
There being none, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion.
Close P Z C twenty-five seventeen.
B Z Z's twenty-five dash seventeen.
Second.
Motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We'll schedule this for a public hearing on October the sixth. I mean, I'll just, we'll vote on this later. I'm sorry. Um, we've read the staff reports for both P Z C twenty-five sixteen and twenty-five seventeen. So we'll go on to new business, which is P Z C twenty-five eighteen. Uh, this has to be received and scheduled for the public hearing. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry.
I I like to make a motion for B Z C twenty-five eighteen, text amendment edition. Is section thirty-three, parking of Clinton, so the regulations, so actually vehicle charging station requirements, advocate or alignment. Real estate.
Received.
And schedule it for a public hearing.
And we'll, yeah, yeah. Um, we'll, we'll schedule for a public hearing. What day with them is chairman?
We have a motion.
Second.
The second, is there any further discussion?
Okay, yeah, yeah, I have some comments on this, actually, we've been thinking about. Um. I think that changing this regulation to the proposed language in the draft section that was uploaded to the uh. Whatever that website we use. Yeah, uh, is not necessarily clear. Um, also, after speaking with Abby a little bit more about it, there is no mechanism for us to force a fill-out. Um, these, it just be on market conditions or word of the owner. So they would install this. Um, wires conduit ready to go and not have to do anything if they don't want to. I do think, uh, we did some, some reservations that were expressed last time were. Uh, I know amount of EVs or things like that. So I did some research and.
Chairman, we're just going to receive this application at this point.
So we're doing.
Correct, yeah.
Uh, but these are just comments, I guess.
So I think, I think what can happen is if there are comments that we can take, the applicant can hear as part of the receipt of the application, any concerns about the application, they may be able to address going into the public hearing. We can certainly do that. Um.
Yeah, that's what the intention is there. Okay, there's some apprehension with where these are going.
Yeah. And those, some of those concerns were expressed when it was first brought up as well, when the app came forward with it. Yes, those those concerns were expressed prior.
There was a. Uh, documentation about what was a proposal at that point and I I still don't think, I guess what I'm trying to say that that proposal encapsulates my. Uh, mine or, you know, if there's anyone else's. Uh, comments from the beginning, so.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any extension? Anybody in opposition? Therefore, the motion passes. It goes to public hearing on the uh sixth of October. The next item on tonight's agenda is a preliminary discussion, a special exception for one Heritage Park Road, the Vox Church, where the applicant might come forward.
Good evening, members of the commission. Will you pull that up? The record, Will Walter, professional engineer with Alfred Plantation Company, representing the applicant. Well, it's a preliminary application, obviously, but. Uh, Box Church, I get Tom from Lisa Holliver here, uh, who worked at the church. Also Justin Hopkins, professional architect with Tecton Architects. Uh, I'm going to briefly introduce things. Tom's gonna talk about the church. I'll talk about the site, building, five to ten minutes max. Um, so essentially the church.
Do I have to accuse myself? I go to box church.
I did for a preliminary discussion, no, not necessarily, because you're not, as long as it, if you're not having any direct benefit.
They don't pay me, they don't, no, I pay them.
Well, that case may be a more.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
No, understood, thank you. So, uh, so the church is looking to possibly move from one building. Just a couple of properties over because their lease is up. Tom will talk about that in a second. We're negotiating with the potential new landowner and before they get into uh a lot of money spent. Architects and engineers and purchasing buildings, they just wanted to get. Uh, some preliminary feedback and and the temperature from this commission to see, we know nothing's binding, but just to kind of give the temperature to this commission. To this point, I'm going to turn over to Tom, a little bit about the church and the property that they're looking to acquire.
Yeah, I think, um, first of all, thanks for um for um giving us this time, um. We uh can go to that next slide. So we currently um have been in Heritage Park for two years. Um, at a location, we have a about, um, it's a three hundred member uh church community here in Clinton. Box Church is a fourteen year old church. We have thirteen locations. I assume that'd be thirteen locations. In Connecticut and Massachusetts, about nine thousand people uh go to Box Church um as a church. Um, but we are a very community based church, um, and have been just uh really delighted uh to be here in Clinton. Our, as well set, our lease is up in uh July of next year, um, where we currently are at. Um, and we've been in negotiations with um the landlord uh here at uh one Heritage Park. Um, see if it's a possibility uh for us to uh relocate our church to a little bigger facility. Um, one of the uh advantages for us coming over to uh the new. Location is the kids' space. Um, and so, yeah, we have. Just, it's been really awesome for us to be here. We've tried to uh support some of the other local churches. We've. Been involved with the three schools and teacher appreciation since we've been here. We've um tried to be uh involved with uh. The uh law enforcement and things like that and the fire department, uh, supporting them with some of our uh community outreach programs. So. We do about six hundred and fifty community outreaches as a church large across uh Connecticut and Massachusetts and. Um, that's really our uh real heartbeat um for us as a church. And so. I don't want to become a sales manager to pitch this uh project, but um we would love for you guys to uh. Give us some feedback and consider uh if this is a good move for our church.
Next, please, next previous slide, please. Just so everybody's aware, the church currently meets at four Heritage Park, which is the the highlighted property on the right hand side. And they're looking to simply move to the property, which is one Heritage Park on the left hand side. So it's literally two, three properties over. Currently, they have two Sunday services, one at eight thirty and one at at ten, and they're not looking to change anything about. The time they're meeting. Alright, so we can go to the next slide, please?
I have one question. If we, okay, it's on this as well. Um, so you're negotiating with the neighbor for additional twenty five parking spaces, that is my question.
So that, yeah, so so the one Heritage Park, which is shown right here, where they're looking to go, has thirty eight parking spaces. Currently, at four Heritage Park, there's a hundred and eighty seats. And where they're looking to go to the new building, which Justin will design in interior renovation, they're looking to put a hundred and eighty seats. So same capacity. Now, per your zoning regulations, the the minimum amount of parking you can have is. One parking space per five seats and the maximum amount of parking you can have is one space per three seats. So a hundred and eighty seats. You're, you have to have between thirty six and sixty spaces, no less than thirty six, no more than sixty on your site. This particular site has thirty eight spaces. Which is right in that what's what's allowed by zoning. They're not looking to build any more parking. Then you're gonna have more stormwater. Obviously, it's a church. It's on somewhat of a a limited budget. So it already meets the zoning code, but they also want to, they also want to, you know, Easter and and Christmas and sometimes you need more parking. They want to plan for the future and not have parking go all the way down the street and possibly onto the street of top. So they're, they've negotiated with the. Property owner of their current, uh, the current building and we have an email and and they're gonna have a letter forthcoming that says, yes, on Sunday mornings. You can use as many spaces as you want. So those few times during the year when they will need more than thirty eight spaces, they're gonna have access because of course. That, you know, four Heritage Park is not going to be used on a Sunday morning. It's going to be a business. So they're gonna have a letter if if we come back formally. Make an application, they will have a letter. That will be a part of the record. Uh, so, uh, what they are looking to do with this site uh physically and and Justin will talk about the building, but. On the site, very simple, just upgrade some landscaping and uh and some lighting. And and a new sign. That's really going to be on the site. They're not looking to actually do any new pavement uh o- on the site. Uh, real briefly, I did a preliminary traffic analysis. There's two things you want to look at when you're talking about traffic for any site. One is you want to make sure it's not going to impact the local roadways, local intersections. This clearly won't because it's. Going three properties over and it's the exact same program. It's happened at four Heritage Park. It's gonna happen at one Heritage Park, a hundred and eighty seats, two services, one at eight thirty, one at ten. So clearly, it's not gonna impact. The local roadways. The other thing you want to look at is, is it going to create a hardship for parking? And that was what I just explained about parking. So we've analyzed that and we don't believe it's going to impact the parking. I reached out to the police chief. Uh, he took a look and he basically said, uh, I'm gonna withhold comment until there's an actual application. And we have a pre-application meeting set with the the uh the the town staff, police, fire, uh, planning, the engineer. I don't know the exact date, but it's in a couple of weeks. Of course, assuming that we get positive feedback, if you guys just say, no way, no how, you know, we might. Reconsider the application, but uh we do have uh it all queued up to have a um a staff that he said he'll give us his feedback. At that meeting. So at this point, that's really all I have for the site. I'm going to turn over to Justin. We can talk about the building.
Thanks, Will. Uh, for the record, Justin Hopkins, I'm an associate principal with Tecton Architects. With offices at thirty four Suquassin Street in Hartford, Connecticut. Do you want me to spell that for you? So if we can go to the next uh slide, so as Will had mentioned, this is primarily an interior renovation, uh, so. Uh, it will be an assembly use group from building code perspective. So part of the interior renovations are making sure that everything's code compliant from. Accessibility, fire protection, fire suppression uh standpoint. Uh, as Will mentioned, a hundred and eighty seats, uh, we will be developing a sanctuary space that's part of this. Uh, with a raised platform. It's another fancy term for a stage. It's not technically considered a stage. It's a platform. There's just a distinction in the in the building code between stages and platforms. So these are really uh places the services are given. Uh, to uh the overall sanctuary. As Tom had mentioned, one of the benefits of this space is to incorporate the Kids World Program. So at all of the the Vox locations, uh, there's an effort to provide more or less Sunday services uh for students. Uh, and those range from age groups from the uh little uh newborns uh to toddlers. Uh, to elementary school and some older kids. These occur during the services and it's a location that families can attend service. And have their kids also attend some additional uh support. So. This is not an education use group. There's a very specific distinction for assembly use groups or houses of worship that allow this type of use within the overall assembly. Uh, use group. So as as far as an entry sequence, we'll have a front door lobby space uh that will have some informal seating. Uh, uh, banquet where coffee uh will be served before and after services. Uh, that area typically is kind of the informal lobby space for a large assembly use group. Uh, and really on axes uh to the entrances where we will have our sanctuary space. Uh, the remainder, I know, uh, our preliminary plans say rental space in the back is likely going to be storage uh. For for the congregation. Uh, there is a mezzanine level uh that is upstairs that is not planned on being used uh as part of the. The uh church function. We're keeping the existing means of egress from the second floor directly out to uh out to grade. As part of any, so no real intervention uh within the building envelope proper, aside from some some signage. Uh, that we will certainly make sure that we go through and comply with the uh the signage regulations. The one thing that I think remains to be studied is in terms of the means of egress. Whether or not we may need to have an additional door located on the building exterior to make sure that we can safely get. People out of the building in an evacuation. Uh, so with that, I'm happy, I think all of us are happy to answer any questions here or if you need any more detail. Uh, but as I think everybody, we found it's best to approach uh. Yeah, municipalities and permissions early in the process so we can understand like. Uh, and make sure that we put our best foot forward in our future applications.
I just have to say one thing, um, the parking is from our current, I don't know if I was clear, I think maybe Willie did say this was from our current landlord. And he was like, you can continue to park there if you, if overflow is ever needed on a busy Sunday and. Um, we have a great relationship with him with him and he said for no charge. So he will give a letter.
I have one question. Um, you said you'd like to use your visiting?
I guess that's.
Uh, like, uh, church out, or everybody's, or kids are upstairs, or anything?
Yeah, we can actually toggle back to the 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 area. Uh, we found in a number of the other churches that we've, that have gone through similar renovations. Having the Kids World Program adjacent, uh, so that if parents are dropping off their kids, they, it, they're not. They're not disparate or they're more not remote from uh where the parents are. So. The entirety of the Kids World Program would be, will be on the floor level, uh, the main floor level.
Any other questions for the commission?
Michael?
Yeah, I just, um, I I really feel that, you know, there are no red flags with this. It's a change of use. Um, by special exception and uh it so, I think that it was uh something that they really should. Um, consider bringing to us as a real proposal. Um, I don't know, uh, I don't see, like I said, there's, there's nothing that would stand out immediately and say. You know, we could never do this. I think it's a special exception, change of use, period.
I would wholeheartedly agree. There doesn't seem to be any reason to object to something like this, so I would encourage you to come forward with a a formal plan. So commission agree with that assessment?
Did, did, I don't know if everybody knows, but uh the reason of, first of all, came about is that company is expanding, so they need that space. They were nice enough to.
Yeah.
Why?
So I think the commission, as as Michael pointed out, and I think the rest of the commission is in agreement, there's no reason to. Deny such an application. I mean, obviously, there's some questions that don't want to be answered, um, but. That'll happen during the application process and your pre-application meetings.
Letter for parking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. So now we move on to old business, uh, PCC twenty five sixteen has been continued to um October the sixth. Uh, we're subject to a vote on PCC twenty five dash seventeen, which is the threatening zoning provisions text amendment, section eighteen of the Clinton zoning regulations. To rule the single family home exemptions for coastal cycling reviews pursuant to public act twenty five dash thirty three.
There is in the in the body of the staff report, there's a potential draft motion for you. The only thing that I would say is the effective date in the staff report reads October first. I would change that to October's, which was going to be consistent with the public acts coming into effect. I would change it to October sixth, only because uh we need to make sure we get our notice timeframes in. And so that will be the, that'll give us the full period to pass.
I I I move to amend the text of section eighteen of the Clinton zoning regulations as drafted in PCC twenty five dash seventeen. Was an effective date of October first. October, yeah, I was changing it to twenty. October sixth, twenty twenty five. And adopt the following findings of fact. One, the final theory for the proposed text amendments to section eighteen of Clinton zoning regulations. Met the notice requirements in Connecticut general statutes, section eight dash seven D. Two, the proposed amendments are consistent with section one point four purpose of the Clinton zoning regulations. Three, the proposed amendments are generally consistent with the twenty fifteen Act of Conservation and Development's recommendation. Consistency and adherence to the Coastal Management Act. I I just wanted to add with the. Just with uh requirements imposed by the state.
I second that, by the way.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a committee report, which is the review of the planning zoning commission of the full draft of the P O C D. Uh, Victoria, would you like to lead us through this?
Sure. Good evening, um, I am Victoria Vitrue with Resilient Land and Water. Uh, we're the consulting firm helping out the town with the P O C D updated. Um, so we're getting to the final stretches here. We've put together a draft plan. Uh, let's see if I can share. I'll show you both what's going on.
Victoria, we're reviewing the plan body at this point, right?
I'm gonna just kind of go through everything that we've.
Well, while Victoria's pulling that up, one thing um that we have talked about and we'll talk about our schedule a little bit next, but we, folks can start to think about uh. September twenty fifth is a potential committee date for reviewing any comments that may come up in this full body or the public, as we've heard, that would be. Note that and then email back with the ability to. What time? By six?
At six, okay.
Five, that's still about nine point five, right?
On the twenty, who got this the third day?
Okay, so we have a uh draft document that we've been working on. Um, I know uh the commission has been updated kind of throughout the process, so um if there's any questions about. You know, background on the P O C D itself, I'm happy to answer that, but I'm just gonna go through all the products that we've got right now. you know, background on the P O C D itself, I'm happy to answer that, but I'm just gonna go through all the products that we've got right now and how folks can review it and provide comments since it will be available for uh public review uh coming, well, it's posted, so uh it is available for public uh review. So uh what you're looking at here, and I know it's a little small on the screen, um but this is the the draft document itself. Um so the document itself, just to kind of go over the layout and and how it's been designed. Um we have kind of three main sections here. So we've got our introduction, understanding what the P O C D is, what the P O C D is, why it's important to the town. Um and we also discuss a little bit of the planning process, which has included uh the survey, you know, what we've um kind of learned throughout the outreach process, interviewing uh or providing questionnaires for boards and commissions and and whatnot. Um we have the second section, which is Clinton today. So this is kind of the fact finding that we've been doing over the past few months, meeting with the steering committee. You know, understanding what's been happening over the past ten years and kind of where the town stands today by way of uh economic development, transportation, mobility. Um so really kind of the data uh portion of the P O C D. And then the the third section, which is really the driver for the document, here I'll zoom in zoom in on this a little bit. Um we have Clinton's vision. Uh so here's where we present the future land use plan. And then we have our six main goals, which is reinforcing downtown Clinton as the community civic and local business center. Position Clinton for economic and grandness growth, promote Clinton's vibrant waterfront, uh diversify housing opportunities for all, support resilient infrastructure services and facilities that address needs of the community and contribute to quality of life. And then protect and enhance open space, natural resources and historic areas. Um so we work really hard to not make this too um, you know, too lengthy of a document, something that was kind of unwieldy and and dare I say, almost useless to a community, right? We've all seen many plans that are hundreds of pages. Um so a lot of the information that is kind of part of that fact finding has been included as an appendix. Um so if anybody really wanted to dive into uh, you know, economy and land use, mobility, whatever that may be, we have included that. Um but not necessarily in the plan document. Um we present the the town's vision here, which is an integration of uh kind of the past P O C D, the twenty fifteen edition. Um it had some really strong comments and and really strong visions for the town, so we wanted to kind of carry those forward. Uh but also honor where the town wants to go in the next ten years, right? Um that vision really captured what the town is by way of, you know, historic features, uh you know, the waterfront. Um but also where are we going economically, housing, you know, what are the, what are the needs and the goals for the next ten years? Uh the future land use plan breaks down the town. Um you know, this isn't a zoning map, right? But it's kind of how things might wanna shift. Um how, you know, what we want some of these regions to look like um, you know, in the next ten years. So we've broken down that future land use plan uh into several different areas, I guess I'll say. Um so we've got the downtown, kind of the downtown periphery. We've got the waterfront. We've broken down the Route One corridor because there, you know, it is um there are some different characteristics, whether you go in west, central or east. Uh we talk a little bit about the interchange commerce area, industrial, coastal residential areas, and then um some of the other residential residential as well, and then open space. Um so we dive into, you know, kind of the vision of what those future land uses might look like in town. Um and then we also give a nod to make sure that this is consistent with other plans, right? You've got the regional plan of conservation and development. The state plan of conservation and development. So we wanna make sure everything um is consistent. And then just kind of diving into the goals and I've, you know, I'm not gonna walk through every single goal and um strategy and action because it is available with third review, but I just wanna kind of give you an understanding of of the document layout. So um here's our first goal, reinforce downtown Clinton as the community civic and local business center. Uh so we've got strategies up here, create and maintain infrastructure that supports a vision for downtown. Each goal has several strategies and then there's several actions within each strategy. Um we pulled some of the community's direct quotes to really show that we've considered what the town has said. Uh the community members have said, we've received at least four hundred and thirty-one or thirty-two survey responses, um which doesn't sound like a lot, but actually for um community engagement, it's a really significant number. Um you know, we're working on several other P O C Ds that only have a few dozen responses. So um community uh community engagement is challenging, so I'm I'm pretty pleased with four hundred and thirty responses. Um so each section kind of captures a few of those quotes from folks in town to really understand um what they wanna see and show that we've tried to honor, you know, what the community wants and and how they want that town, how they want the town to look. Um so this is a similar layout for each of the six goals. I'm just kind of cruising quickly here. You can see um that, you know, we've got strategies and actions for each. You'll also notice when you go through the plan that some of these actions um kind of mention other actions, right? We really wanted to show that many of these are connected to each other, whether they're complementing or maybe something needs to be, you know, achieved prior to implementing a certain action. We really wanted to try to show the integrated um, you know, the integration of of the other goals, you know, giving each other the route throughout the plan. Um so I will switch over quickly to the website. Um so the plan itself, it's ready for right, it's ready for review, it's ready for comment. Uh as of right now, uh we're hosting it on the Plan and Conservation Development website or the Story Map, um which has been kind of the hub for all of the information um for the plan. Uh so I put the draft right at the very top, right? So if somebody's trying to visit and they wanna review this plan, um I don't want them fiddling around trying to find it. I want it right there where they can see it. So uh folks can click right there, take a look at the draft plan. Um it leads to my OneDrive, so hopefully everything is secure as I'm hoping it is. Um we've got the plan body and then all of the accompanying uh appendices as well. Um so everything is in PDF. Um so folks can take a look and then they do have the ability here to submit a comment. It's a really simple, open-ended response. Um these all are collected by us at the the consulting firm. Um and again, I have a link here in case folks need to kind of refer back to that PDF.
Um so we Victoria, um Michael has a his hand up.
Oh, yeah, sure.
You're muted, Michael.
Thank you. Um it would be helpful for the public if the name of the file for the P O C D was uh such that it was at the top of the list rather than after the appendices. So maybe name it as underline P O C D or, you know, draft P O C D so that it moves it up because otherwise people might not see the main document first.
Great comment. I know as I opened that, I thought that as well. So thank you for reiterating. I will change that. Um tonight you're tomorrow morning. I will do that. Thank you. Um it's a good point. Try to make it easy as possible. Um so in addition to to the document and the appendices, we've also been working on an implementation matrix. So um this is something that we've been crafting. It, everything kind of to the left is all of the actions, action number, uh you know, sorted by goal and whatnot, but we really wanted to focus here on these columns um trying to identify partners, right? No plan is successful without um implementation, so uh we wanna inform those that are going to kind of be the P O C D champion, you know, who do you need to bring to the table to have discussions um to really get these actions underway. Um so maybe not necessarily they're in charge of implementing that action, but they're gonna be charged with coming to the table and having discussions. Um so these are kind of preliminary um estimations, understandings of what commissions, boards, departments, and then other, you know, whether they're local, regional or state partners, you know, who might need to be involved, right? So if we wanna launch one of these actions, um how do we begin? Who do we need to talk to? Um this is, it's a living document, so it's not meant to be set in stone. Um as some actions get accomplished, you know, those partners might change. Um you know, actions may not be necessary anymore or, you know, things might change over the next ten years. Um so it's not a set in stone implementation matrix. It is something that will have to be revisited um at least on an annual basis. Um you know, and and revisions can be made there. Um so this is something we've been working on as well that uh I've gotta get into a PDF and I've gotta get that uploaded as well um into the OneDrive, just so folks can see the appendix. Um it's a little bit large, so it's taking me a little bit of time, but that will be up uh tomorrow. So uh folks can take a look at that implementation matrix as well. We do want uh, you know, municipal partners, departments, boards to be aware kind of being identified as a partner, or maybe they think they should be identified as a partner and they haven't been. Um you know, we wanna make sure that those comments are are collected and understood. Um so that's where the draft is standing at the moment. It has just been um put out, so it will be available uh until I believe October, what's the?
So that, yeah, the vote, so yeah, the the vote will be October sixth. So do you wanna go through the schedule?
Um yeah, a few.
Victoria, before we move on, I've got a couple of quick observations. Um on page eighteen in the plan body, the last paragraph reads, by two thousand thirty-five, Clinton will be open for business. I think we wanna change that to
Oh, yeah.
From two thousand twenty-five through two thousand thirty-five. For business. Additionally, within the in the plan, um the words open for business should also be in bold print. So right now it's Clinton, right now it's by Clinton, by two thousand thirty-five Clinton. And then it goes, we'll be open for business, but it's that part should all be in bold and we should include twenty-five to thirty-five. One other change that I think is kind of important is on appendix C, page seventy-eight, where it's under potential land use and strategies. The first bullet is is continue to leverage floating zones. We just took a measure to scratch floating zone. We wanna, we wanna eliminate that.
That's right. That was presented and then we had the discussion at the meeting. Right, okay.
So just a couple
Yeah.
quick things.
I I had also a very trivial comment.
Go ahead.
In the the preliminary pages before page one, um I would just add uh Romanet page numbers to those.
Oh, they think
lowercase Roman numeral.
Okay.
Well, they have a
Okay, I think, yeah, so the next step will be, um again, it's, you know, it's open for comments such as page numbers as, you know, as well as any other thoughts um and actions. Um so we will be, right, voting on this October sixth, uh the next meeting. Um we're convening a week before, right?
Right, yeah. So the so the plan right now is public meeting tomorrow, right? So if you have any friends, family, other acquaintances that you'd like to bring in, I know a couple, um my understanding is W P C C is gonna adjourn early and E D C is actually canceling their meeting, so their members can be here for it. So we're really trying to, you know, fill the room, make sure people know what's going on. Um there'll be a few weeks where folks can get their comments, and I think we had said we wanted to close it before September thirtieth so that there would be time if there were any additional corrections coming. So everybody here is is welcome to also use the comment tool. Email me, you know, Victoria. We wanna make sure if there's any comments like the ones you just made, that we're getting them into uh the final draft, which will be presented for the October sixth meeting. We wanna be able to get that out to you with time to read it. So that'll be a thing. Um and then, yeah, once October sixth happens, the plan locks.
Right.
And so we're in that sixty-five day period where it goes out for review of the state um at River Cog. And we get those comments back and then we'll come back to you for a formal vote for adoption um in December.
So on, I'm sorry, just on the sixth. Are we we're meeting or no?
October the sixth.
So because we bumped the meeting.
Correct. So yeah, as of the holiday, that's our regular meeting. And so that is the date at which the commissioner asked to vote.
I'm looking at it. It's the first Monday. Okay.
Any other questions for Victoria at this time?
Well, okay, I'm not being rude, I swear. See, I've just picked out a couple of things. Is there a way to like go through that whole?
We've we've been doing that.
No, both been doing that. He's has done enough to do that, but he uh he is
Yeah, so I think what I, um so I know we've been sharing an internal version with the steering committee. Um I mean, so I could try to do the same with the commission um and, you know, try to work on one document. Um or if you wanna put together a bullet list, that might even be easier and spay.
Same list to people that actually go
Better for Yeah, everybody's been doing it. Everybody we've been
I know, but
We saw a different, a little bit different version of it. And uh I think that, I think it's really coming on, you know, if if we look through it again, we're gonna look at the same things we've already looked at. I think everybody on the commission should look over it right here, where Victoria pointed out, where you can find it. And see if they notice anything that that jumped.
Fantastic job you did there.
Um yeah, I mean, we can maybe share a PDF. So I um I'll say that from here on out, I'd like to work in a PDF where folks can just make comments. Um just because final formatting is kind of just about there and I don't want figure numbers and all sorts of things to get out of the back of comments.
Yeah, yeah, great job.
So what we could do is maybe share kind of an internal commission version, um so that way folks can comment directly on a PDF. And, you know, try to do a collaborative effort on one document if if we can. Um try, just to try to streamline a comment collection at this point, uh if that works with everyone.
I think that's the best bet. Again, you know, the members of the you know, going through this. So if we miss something, we're gonna miss it again.
I'm also
But you are right. It should be a PDF document, not a Word document now.
Yeah, I, yeah, we're definitely at that point.
Well, we do have a newly retired person active.
Um I'm also happy to accept you don't email. So if somebody wants to just put a few bullets down on page numbers, section numbers, whatever that is, you know, I'm happy to accept those as well. I just don't wanna, I don't wanna do word from here on out. I think we need to
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the 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 layout looks wonderful.
Yeah, beautiful.
Any other comments from the commission?
Those are, those are true.
Okay, well then we're going to the next item on our agenda, which is correspondence and bills. Nothing to add, which brings us to the best agenda, item on your agenda of all. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn and there any further discussion?
My wife Lisa.